Now, we have something really special. The Colorado State Demographer, Elizabeth Garner, is here to talk to us about demographic trends in Colorado and in our own locality. And policy decisions that our community is facing right now and our council is facing can be informed by this presentation. So, we really appreciate your coming out. Welcome to Golden. I understand this is your first opportunity to present to city council.
First time in Golden. I'm so excited. Thank you guys so much for inviting me to be here. So, this is, I'm gonna make sure I can click forward. Oh, no. She told me I needed to turn it on. Got that first. Just wanna make sure I'm doing things right. Alright, so, a couple of times, I'm gonna be probably rude and put my back to you, and I don't mean to anybody, but just to make sure that I've got the screen. So, I think it's really important, obviously, to be looking at demographic trends for communities, for counties, for municipalities, and really understand what's going on in Colorado to kinda understand where does Golden fit into the big picture of the state. If there's a couple of points that I think to tie home and just think about how they might impact Golden, it's what I call Colorado's image. Cause these are areas where we're seeing transitions in the state regarding income, changes in migration, changes in age, growing, what I call growing and slowing, and I'll show you a picture so that it makes more sense, and then changes in race and ethnicity. Because there's a lot of factors, but I think if you can kinda narrow it down to five and keep it remembered on hand, then it makes it a little bit easier to remember. But, in order to know what is going on in Golden, we kinda have to understand the biggest picture. So, how fast is the US growing? Well, it's growing at about two and a half million people a year. It's about 0.8 percent, so remember that number, 0.8. Colorado is at about 5.4 million people, increasing about 1.9 percent per year. That's this last year between 14 and 15. Our new 16 numbers actually come out about the end of December. So, we can quickly tell that the Colorado's growing at at least twice as fast as the US as a whole, which is important to know. Where do we rank? And we're second fastest, behind North Dakota, and most likely, North Dakota will not be number one this next year because of what's been happening with the oil and gas industry. They had tremendous growth due to that. Now, we've been impacted by oil and gas as well, so will we be number one this next year? Who knows? Will we be in the top three percent growing states? Probably. If we took absolute numbers, we increased by over 100,000. That was seventh fastest in the US, and behind some pretty big states. First time that we hit 100,000 since 2001. So, we really had this time period where we didn't hit that growth of 100,000. But, a lot of people talk about, well, this is just unprecedented growth, tremendous growth, exponential growth. And, I'm gonna guess that probably some of you remember that we've done this before. We did it in the 70s, where we were growing at 5 percent per year, and we hit that 100,000 mark two times. We did it in the 90s, where we hit seven years over 100,000, growing at 3 percent. So, actually hitting this 100,000 mark is pretty normal. This is what we actually expected and forecast for the state. But, we know within this state that there is disparity, that some areas are growing and some areas are declining. And if we look at a map of the state, all of the red, orange, yellow counties are those that are increasing in population between 2010 and current. All of the shades of blue are counties that are declining. So, even though we're the second fastest state increasing by over 100,000, we know that a lot of parts of Colorado are not growing. So, we definitely recognize that's the case. If we look at total population change, there's two components. One is called natural increase, which is births minus deaths. And that net number is, it's represented by the blue, and that number's about 30,000. So, when the Denver Post came out and said, "Okay, there's 100,000 more drivers on the road," it's like, "No." Cause those were, 30,000 were babies, and they don't drive yet. 70,000 was what we called net migration. We're gonna assume that majority of them are over the age of 16, so they were probably drivers, but not all of them as well. But, that 70,000 is net migration. So, we can see the red component is net migration, and we can see where we hit that 100,000 mark, but where we were in the 90s, and then if I had the 80s or the 70s, we would've seen that 100,000 mark as well. You can also see that net migration is very cyclical. So, we see that it follows kind of a business pattern, and I'll explain a little bit more in a second. The one thing I do want you to notice is that we've seen this decline in natural increase. So, we've, and it's been due to two different components. One is that we did have a decline in births during the recession. You may have noticed it in Golden, certainly in Jefferson County and in other places around the state. There were fewer kindergarteners this year, fewer because of the, five years prior, we had fewer births. And so, we'll continue to see that trend for a couple more years where we just have smaller class size entering in. And we're also increasing deaths, and I'll show a little bit more on that in terms of looking at our age distribution is such that we've just got more people aging into ages more likely to die. If we look at net migration across the state, all of the red, orange, yellow are counties that have been having net in-migration, again, primarily along the front range. All of the shades of blue are counties that have had net out-migration. So, over a third of the counties have had net out-migration during this time period from 2010 to 2015, which we call, you know, this is when we are recovering from the recession. So, we're seeing again this disparate growth, which is really a little unprecedented, where we haven't seen this much difference between the front range and the rest of the state. If we think about migration, so obviously, it's a really important piece to understand migration, since that's a large share of our total population change, what kind of folks do we get? Primarily youngins. The age is along the horizontal axis, and then the total number is along the vertical. So, if we look at it pretty much, our bread and butter population is between, that migrates here is between the ages of kinda 22 and 37. So, a little bit older than just strictly the college-age student. So, we also get the young adults because we are kind of a regional center in the Rocky Mountain West. Red line is at 65, just so you know that we don't get a lot of people over the age of 65 migrating to the state. It is slightly positive, but it's not, we're not like in Arizona or Florida where we're attracting a lot of people over the age of 65. So, what does this mean for Jefferson County and for Golden? Well, if we look at Jefferson County's total population, I know this is a total boring chart, but there was no other way to look at it besides this. So, we're starting at 1980, and we're hitting up here in 2015. But, what I wanna emphasize is that Jefferson County, over time, goes through fast growth and then, well, not even fast growth, growth, and then it kind of chugs along, growth, and then it kind of chugs along. And really, between 2010, or 2000 and 2010, Jefferson County didn't really increase by very much. It had really slow population growth for a couple reasons. Can you name one? Because we're aging. And so, that household that maybe had a family of four, the kids left, went to school or wherever, became a family of two. So, you still had the same number of housing units, just fewer people per household. And that will put downward pressure on the total population. Likewise, we had a rough road during the 2000s as well. We had two recessions that we plugged through, and because Jefferson County's a large county, it got affected by it. And then, we're now starting to see a little bit more growth now in the most recent years, but I'll show a chart. Nope, I won't, not quite yet. So, if we looked at the total population change for Jefferson County, what's causing most of it? So, the total population change is this blue line, dark blue line. The green line is what we call natural increase, what I said, births minus deaths. And what you can see for Jefferson County, what has it been doing? Steadily declining. Because both, you've had fewer births and a greater number of deaths going on. So, we're seeing less increase in the county as a whole from natural increase. This black dotted line is net migration. And you can see that really, even though the county is really large, and it does not like really super energy-dependent or other kind of a boom and bust, that it really is affected by what goes on in the state. And we can see where we've had net out-migration in the 80s, and then a lot of growth in the 90s, net out-migration in the 2000s, and now, we're starting to see some net in-migration into the county. Why do I bring this up? Because you're obviously part of Jefferson County. And the same things will be happening to Golden as well. If we look at net migration, this is maybe more interesting. What are the kinds of folks that are attracted to Jefferson County? Well, it loses its young adults. If we look right here, this is the 20 to 30-year-olds, net out-migration. And we have to think about why. And I bet you guys know. I think it's one of the topics that you guys talk about. And I know that this is Jefferson County as a whole, but Golden has an issue with it as well. Then, you're attracting kind of the 30 to 45-year-olds, and then, at least between 2000 and 2010, losing almost every single age group up until 80. And then, started having a net in at that 80-plus, where you guys have got some nursing homes in the county that bring up that number. But, young adults have a harder time attract being able to purchase housing units in Jefferson County as a whole, not just Golden. And so, this is really reflective of that, that you can see that you have to wait until you're a little bit older, you know, not that 30's old at all, to be able to start being able to move in to the county and afford a place. If we look at the total population change and where does the municipalities within the county fit, between 2010 and 2015, the county increased by about 30,000. Of that, we've got about 8,000 coming into the Arvada component, about 9,000 into the Lakewood component, about 7,000 in the unincorporated component of Jefferson County, with then Golden coming in at about 1,400 during that time period. If we look at the percent change, the whole state was increasing by about 1.6 percent per year on average. Jefferson County only by 1.1 percent. But, we can see that Golden is a little bit closer to the state average of 1.6. Likewise, Arvada. And really, those are the only two places that are a little bit closer to the state average within the county itself. But, remember again, you might have the same number of housing units, just fewer people per household, and that's one of the kind of switches that goes on. But, I thought it'd be interesting to see where you guys fit into the big picture. If we then just look at Golden's population over time, again, from 1990 or 1980 to current, it looks really similar to Jefferson County's population trend, to where you got growth, and then during the 80s, late 80s, you had actually declined, then fast growth again in the 90s, and then, it's been really pretty relatively flat during all of the 2000s, and then, you're starting to see an increase in the population recently, again, that 1,000, 1,400 increase since 2010. Does that all feel right? Does that seem what you've kind of seen in the city, what you've seen in the county? Little bit? So, when I was talking with Ben on the phone, he's like, "But, I want you to talk about more than just Golden. I want you to talk about the area around Golden." So, what I tried to do in this depiction, and it's really, and unfortunately, we just don't have a lot of the right technology in our office to do it well. If you look at this dashed pink line, that's the boundary for Golden. And what I tried to do was show in the area of Golden plus the surrounding area, the total population, and this is by block group, to show where those different concentrations of the population are. So, we can see at this top kind of northeast component, you've got a little bit stronger population. Also, you know, this is Highway 58, this is I-70, you can see a little bit stronger population there. But, I think more telling what we ended up doing is that, so, Golden's population's around 20,000. If we ended up doing a buffer of just five miles from Golden, the population in the area jumps up to 180,000. I was like, "Holy cow, we need to decrease the buffer." I was like, "That's a lot of people." Cause I didn't know what was reasonable in terms of driving, but then I realized that my office is only 12 miles from Golden. And I was like, "Well, that shows how close Golden really is." And, so then, I decreased it to a three-mile buffer, and it dropped it to about 90,000. But, so this gives you a little bit of an idea of, you know, you've got the 20,000 in Golden, but you've also got a strong population coming up at this north, kind of this northeast component, as well as almost just directly east. Not as much on the southern part, except we're kind of just right along Sixth Avenue. Does that feel about right to people? Yeah? Okay. So, what else do we know about Golden? Well, we know that you've got a lot of households, and you've got a lot of family households. Over half of all the households are family households, which is shown here. This is the, the blue bar is the number of households in the year 2000, the red is 2010. This first grouping is all households. Of all the households, over half are family households, but there was very little increase in family households during that time period between 2000 and 2010. Families with children under 18 actually declined in that time period. And that happens really easily through birthdays. You're a family of four with kids in high school, they age out, and you no longer have families with children in school. And, so, it's easy to see how that happens. We saw an increase in non-family households, so those are households made up of people that are not related to each other. So, some of the universities in that, but it's also people that wanna live alone, or, you know, might've been living with a partner, you know, just weren't married. We can see this non-family households actually living alone. This is like the person that says, "No, really, I don't even want a roommate. I wanna live by myself. I want my own closet, deal with my own dishes." And so, actually, a large share of those non-family households were people living alone. And that's important to think about in terms of looking at your total housing units, your total population, and who's using all of your housing units? Cause you could have a big, beautiful house that was really maybe five-bedroom, but be living alone. So, when you're looking at your kind of housing analysis, it's important to look that you do have a fairly large share of your non-family households are people that are living alone, and it grew. Likewise, this last one is non-family households living alone over the age of 65. We know that Jefferson County is aging, and it's one of our oldest counties in the state, and aging one of the fastest, so as a component of Jefferson County, I was curious where Golden fit, and we can see that you're also increasing the number of households over the 60, over the age 65, living alone. Again, a reason to bring it up is because they may need additional services. They may need, you know, not say that the city service is necessarily, but part of a community where, you know, there might be people checking on them, or, you know, shoveling the snow in the winter, whatever it might be, if we ever get any snow. But, something to be thinking about. So, let's talk a little bit more about age, because I think that's one of the bigger impacts in this area. If we look at the state of Colorado, this is an age distribution for the state, color-coded by different generations. So, if we look at the farthest, am I totally blocking your view of the map? Of the, of the, no, you're good, William?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't, I see you perfectly looking this way. So, the greatest generation is the furthest right, followed by the silent generation. Purple are your great big group of baby boomers, then we've got Gen X in purple. We've got then, the red are your millennials, and then, the blue is the next generation. So, this is what the state of Colorado looks like. The black line is at the age 65, just to get you an idea of where the different generations are. And we can see that, you know, there are some dips, but it's not too different along here. It's not a perfect square. There's definitely fewer Gen X. We've got our big first bump of the millennials, but then, you can see where we had fewer kiddos recently. This is Jefferson County. You can really see the difference in age distribution. How many more millennial, or how many more boomers are in Jeffco? Anybody around in the 70s? So, Jeffco was like the coolest place on the planet in, during the 70s. In Denver metro area, everybody was leaving Denver, and they were high-tailing it to Jefferson County. That's where you see majority of your housing units were built in the county. Or, in the 70s, we've got those great architectural designs from the 70s, and people were moving here in flocks. And what age typically moves and starts a new house? Somebody in their 20s and 30s, right? How long now has it taken from the 70s to 2015, 2016? So, now, all those baby boomers that moved here in their 20s and 30s are now in their 60s and 70s, some in their 50s still. So, that's an important piece to understand about Jefferson County as a whole, and understanding that that family's gone through transitions from a family of four to a family of two. Now, they may be looking at a family of one, then they may out, age out of that housing unit. And who comes into that new housing unit? That younger family, if they can afford it. So, just like neighborhoods turn over, in a way, Jefferson County's gonna turn over. Denver's turned over already lots of times cause of its age, but Jefferson County's definitely gonna be turning over in terms of this area. But, it's important to know, as these folks are aging out of the labor force, a lot of them are gonna wanna age in place. A lot of them are gonna love the place that they live. The question is, who's gonna take their new job, that job that they're vacating, and where are they gonna live? And so, that's why we've seen a lot of pressure, is that I'm gonna, I'm gonna exit from the labor force, but I'm gonna stay put, but that my job needs to be filled, and somebody's gotta fill that spot. So, we're gonna have a much different active labor force than we've seen in the past as well. And so, that's why you might also be feeling some pressure on housing in this area as we see things turn over. If we look at Golden's age distribution, you're a little bit different. One reason is because of the university. So, the university makes you a little bit younger, and you can see, so what we're doing is comparing 2000 to 2010, and we saw this increase in the 18 to 24-year-olds. I'm assuming that's a lot due to the university. We saw a decline in the less than nine and the 10 to 17-year-olds. We also saw a decline in the 35 to 44, well, the 25 to 34 and the 35 to 44. But, where did we start seeing growth in the age of your population? We saw in the 45 to 54, the 55 to 64, it was like huge increase, as well as the 65-plus. And again, it's not that you're attracting 65-year-olds to the county, or 55-year-olds to the county, it's that you're, or to your community. It's just you and your neighbors have been celebrating birthdays, and so, you're aging into that 65-plus population. You look a little confused.
No, I'm not confused.
Okay.
This is my thoughtful, pensive look.
That's your thought, okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure I was gonna answer any questions as we were here. So, why are we getting old so fast? One is just because we're actually still pretty young. And actually, to go back here a little bit, let me just, one of the things that I found really interesting is that Golden is actually younger than the state average, younger than the county average. So, about 9% of the population is over the age of 65, compared to the county, which is 13, compared to the state as a whole, which is 11. But, you take out your college students, and it raises it to about 12%. So, that's always the hard part, is obviously, the university is part of the community, but what's great about the university is that they stay the same age the whole time, right? All you're doing is recycling 25, or, you know, 18 to 22-year-olds. They come in, they leave, they come in, they leave, so they all stay the same age. So, we don't have to worry about, you know, aging them forward, but, so you take them out, and then, you do see that you are aging and that you do have this important 65-plus population that's increasing. And it's growing so fast for us in the state because we are so young. We're the, I think it's now the sixth youngest state in the US in terms of our share of the population over the age of 65. But, we've got a lot of boomers in Jefferson County, has a gazillion boomers, it seems like. We've got about 1.3 boomer, 1.3 million boomers in the state. By 2030, our forecast population increase between now, 2015 and 2030 is forecasted increase by about 77%, increasing from about 700,000 to about 1.2 million just from celebrating birthdays, not with this net migration in of that 65-plus. Our fastest-growing decade is right now, so this is something for Golden to be really taking a look at right now, while they're young. Because what's great thing about birthdays is that you just do it once a year, and so, you age from like 64 to 65, and then, you don't get to 66 until the next year. And so, typically, the folks under the age, you know, like of 75, don't need a lot of services. But, as people age, that 75 to 80, 80 to 85, that's where we start needing more services. And so, thinking about your community, and you've got, it's great, you've got this still town atmosphere of this city, and understanding what that older aging population is gonna do here, and how do they age well in place, might be something for the city to take a look at. This is just another way to take a look at the age distribution. I'm gonna bring it up because there could be some financial ramifications as well. We've got three different time periods here. The red is 1990, green is 2010, blue is 2030. When you can see the color behind it, it's where that age group grew during that two-decade time period. So, you can definitely see the boomers in that red bubble, right here in 1990, between the ages of 25 and 44. Between 1990 and 2010, they aged into the 45 to 64-year-olds. And what is great about 45 to 64-year-olds? Highest earning, highest spending on goods and services, so think about your sales tax, highest property tax paying. And that was our fastest-growing age group during that time period between 1990 and 2010. Now, between 2010 and 2030, where do we see really fast growth? We see it at the young end, and it's not really fast growth, but growth at least, we have people coming in behind. Very little growth in the 45 to 64-year-olds, and a ton of growth in the 65-plus. How will that impact Golden? How will that impact sales tax? How will that impact anything else that you might be seeing in the community? People buy lots of goods. When that 45 to 64-year-old buying refrigerators, they're buying stuff for the house, by buying stuff for the kids, but then, there's kinda done buying stuff, they're ready to un-stuff, and they're by, they're spending majority of their dollars on services, which aren't taxed the same, if at all. So, thinking about how that might impact Golden might be something to be thinking about. If we look again at this same idea, this map of Golden plus the area around it, I wanted to get an idea of where did that 65-plus live? And we can see really, and again, I'm sorry that the pink dotted line, you can kinda see, you know what your borders look like. We can see you've got a pocket kind of in this, I don't, what's that neighborhood called?
The mayor's, mayor's neighborhood.
Beverly Hyde.
Beverly Hyde, okay.
Lots of old folks there.
You can also see a little bit of a group right here, definitely on this piece. Now, this is outside of Golden, but on 58 coming in to Golden, up here at that top kind of northwest component, a little bit older. And we see, you know, a little bit down here. But, anyway, this gives you an idea of where the people are, but you can see really in the center, not as much. But, anyway, a way to think about where that aging population is, this is available on our website, you can pick out any age group you wanna look at, so that when you're trying to be strategic and look at where would you be marketing to people, or whatever, that this would be an idea to look at. Why should we be even talking about aging? These are all of the different topics that will be impacted, whether it's just sheer numbers, the economy, looking at your labor force, which I think is one of the big things that you also need to be looking at. A huge folk, a huge group of folks are gonna be aging out of the labor force. The big question is, they're gonna, these folks are gonna want to stay in Golden. The big question is, they're gonna, these folks are gonna want to stay in Golden. Where are those new workers gonna live? You know, where is that housing available for that entrant into the labor force coming in? Downward pressure on income, as I had mentioned, health, disabilities, transportation, public finance. So let's talk a little bit more about income. We've got some challenges, I think, in terms of income. That we all need to be aware of within, whether you're in Jefferson County, if you're in Golden, or your state as a whole. This end of the demographic dividend is going to hit the state. We're having problems with the state budget. A lot of it actually has to do with the aging of the baby boomers. Other things as well, but this downward pressure on household income is, a lot of it has to do with our age distribution. Lot of it has to do with occupational mix. We've been creating a lot of jobs at lower wages. And that's putting downward pressure on household income. More race than ethnic diversity in the state, which is also putting downward pressure on household income primarily due to educational attainment. The largest share of our population on that diversity side is Hispanic. And, uh, lower education leads to lower household income. Type and size of households, that's more of a math issue. If there's fewer people per household, you get a lower household income. But then also youth un and underemployment, I think a lot of people, uh, under or overestimate the millennials. People talk about, especially downtown, where I get more affected because of where my office is. They're building housing units for the rich millennials. I'm like, which one are you looking at? Cause there's, they have been really negatively impacted by the economy, especially those in the kinda twenty-five to thirty-five. A lot of them have been underemployed or unemployed for long periods of time. Data already showing that when you compare baby boomers to Gen X to millennials, all of the same age group of twenty-five to thirty-four, that millennials have a lower household income in real terms. So the question is, who is gonna buy my house? Cause they're not, they don't have the incomes for it. And that's another thing to maybe be thinking about here in Golden. If we look at your income distribution, it is a little bifurcated. We can see, so the red bar is Golden, the blue bar is Colorado. Colorado's median household income's about fifty-nine, Jefferson County's is about sixty-nine, Golden's is about fifty-eight. Now this is household income, it does not take any college students into account that are in dorms. But it would take into account college students that are not in dorms. So it is a little bit negatively impacted by the college students. And you can kind of see that where Golden ticks up here at the lowest end. You know, where maybe there's co, college students not earning any income, not doing any type of work study. But then you've got a little bit of a peak in this thirty to thirty-nine. So it's kind of a, it's a tough income. Uh, you're not necessarily straight poverty, but it's hard to earn and you've got a little bit, it's hard to pay for things. A, a larger share here, but then about a little bit lower in this middle area, all the way from forty thousand up until you hit a hundred and fifty. And then you've got a larger share of the households are in the hundred, hundred and fifty to two hundred and the two hundred plus. So I thought that was really interesting to think about in your community, this kind of bifurcation, where you've got a lot of lower income households plus a greater share also at the higher end. Does that feel right? Does that seem like it could be true? Kinda, yeah? Okay. Again, I, it went up, when Ben asked me to do this, I was like, sweet, I have never studied Golden ever. So it gave me an opportunity to learn more about you guys, so. And then I did the same thing, looking at median household income, kind of around the area and where we can see, again, kind of more in the central component, it's a little bit lower. The darker colored purples, it's where you've got the higher median household income. So kind of in the southwest corner, you can see it, up in the north, kind of northeast, as well as this northwest component, you can see that higher household income. Now again, this is at block groups, which does not align perfectly to your city boundary. But I wanted to be able to tell a story where kind of things were. So growing and slowing, and this I think is the last piece. So what is our forecast for the state? Uh, we know that job growth is highly correlated to net migration. And this is kind of the bars and lines that show it. The blue bar is net job growth, the red line is net migration. A lot of people complain about, ah, all those people moving in. But do you ever hear anybody say, oh, all those jobs moving in? No. People hardly ever complain about jobs. But remembering that a job is a person is really important. We're already starting to see things hit for legislative looking, where people want to do some more constraints on housing unit growth. But those same communities or same counties aren't saying, hey, we would really like to limit economic growth. Right? Do you guys ever talk about that? Well, you guys might, because you're a smaller community, looking at a balance between the two. But it's an, it's an important piece to understand. But I want to also show that the forecast out to twenty-forty is a showing of slowing job growth and slowing migration, really following what we're seeing nationally in terms of trends, in slowing job growth and slowing population growth. Lot of it has to do with those baby boomers, aging out and creating downward pressure on even labor force growth. Our population forecast then, taking that into account, we do an economic forecast and a demographic forecast, where we don't have enough people to fill jobs, we migrate them in, and that becomes our net migration forecast. So what we're forecasting for the state is to increase from five point four million to about, uh, seven point eight million by twenty-forty, and about eight point six million by twenty-fifty, with majority of the population growth along the front range, which is this blue component, the red component being, um, the western slope, which is growing slightly. If we look at it by a state, the darkest colored counties are those that are forecasted increase by the most. The lightest color is actually counties we're forecasting to decline in population. If we take a time period that might be easier to think about, let's go from twenty-ten to twenty-forty. So thirty-year time period, we're forecasting that the state will increase by about two point eight million people. Which was really close to the total population in the front range, or in the Denver metro area in the year two, twenty-ten. So imagine creating the Denver metro area again by twenty-forty. Somewhere in the state. Or, I know, it's pretty scary. However, it's growing, but slowing. But of that two point eight million, two point four in the front range. One point five in the Denver metro area. Five hundred thousand up north in Laramie-Weldon, four hundred thousand down south between Pueblo and El Paso, with the remaining four hundred thousand around the rest of the state. If we look at it for now, just comparing Jefferson County and Colorado, basically looking at Jefferson County increasing from kind of the five hundred and sixty-five thousand currently around, to about six hundred and eighty-six thousand by twenty-forty, so about an increase of a hundred thou, a hundred and thirty thousand people in Jefferson County. If we look at growth rates, this is maybe more telling. We can see these are growth rates increasing, this is looking from twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen, twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty right now, we're looking at about that one point seven, one point, almost one point eight for the state. Slowly declining to about one percent growth rate by twenty-fifty. Jefferson County by even less, about one percent currently, slowing down to about point two by twenty-fifty. So again, what I'm saying is that we're growing, but we're slowing. So the pace of growth is definitely slowing down. Most of it has to do with our age distribution. We're seeing this downward pressure on the labor force. If there's the downward pressure on labor force, there are fewer people to take jobs. You cannot create as many jobs if you don't have the people to create. The last thing I wanted to kinda talk about was your commuting pattern for this, for the town, city, sorry. Which I thought was really interesting. So the big green circle are the total jobs in Golden. The little green circle, complete circle, is your labor force in Golden. Where the two intersect is where your labor force is filling the jobs in Golden. Not a lot of overlap. Do you guys notice it? Do you notice people commuting in and out? Yeah? So this is really interesting, I think, um, in terms of looking at that, um, pairing up jobs and labor force, where we don't see a lot of it. The primary place that fills your jobs, so these are the top areas where workers come from. Denver's number one, followed by Lakewood, Arvada, Golden, Westminster, Thornton, and then Dakota Ridge, um, is a, a CDP, uh, census designated place where they come in from. But anyway, I thought that that was interesting to look at, really about seventeen, let's see, eighteen thousand jobs, a little over eighteen thousand jobs, and this is only wage and salary jobs, this does not include sole proprietors. And only about eight thousand eighty-two hundred workers with very little overlap between the two. Is that surprising at all, or did you guys know this? You knew it all? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to check. A lot of it has to do, I mean, number one thing, your, your number one job by industry is manufacturing, which you probably knew that with Coors. Last thing, and I'm not gonna spend any time on it at all, cause I've already said it, would become more, more racially and ethnically diverse, increasing from about, uh, our race, ethnic minorities were about fifteen percent of our population in nineteen-seventy, increasing to about thirty percent in twenty-seventy, uh, twenty-seventy, in twenty-ten, increasing to about forty-five percent by twenty-forty. How do we know that? Because we already have them as our youngins. Our youngins are much more diverse than our older adults. And so if we look at our population under the age of eighteen, we've already got that diversity in place, which will now impact our labor force and everything else. There are gonna be the buyer, our consumer buyers are gonna be our labor force, all aging into those ages that we typically participate, um, in our community. So, hopefully this has given you some stuff to think about for your community, thinking about how maybe downward pressure on income might impact things in, in Golden, may or maybe not, I don't know. Migration, how do you, how do you attract the best and the brightest to fill the best positions? People can locate anywhere. How do you get the right people here? I mean, you're gonna see a lot of aging out of the labor force, and you're gonna need people, qualified people to come in and fill positions. How do you get those right people? How do you market, you know, maybe Golden to the right person to fill those positions? Aging, do you have an aging plan? Do you have an aging strategy for the city? Looking at this disparate growth and even understanding how growth might be affected, impacting your area, especially the periphery, and then how aging, how changes in race and ethnicity might impact stuff. So hopefully, this is giving you some stuff to think about. Hopefully touches base, maybe? Any questions at all?
That was terrific, and, you, you know, Golden is a community filled with geeks and city council reflects that. So, um, council, do you have any specific questions? This was an overwhelmingly informative presentation. Anyone? Uh, Sasha?
Uh, we, so, on Saturday, we had some, at my coffee with the council, we had a person who's looking at affordable housing in Golden. But she talked about population growth from two thousand to twenty-fifteen, I think. And what she did was she lifted out the students and the prison, we have the prison. And she said that if you lift out the students in the prison, our growth rate is actually not that high. But that because the number of students has increased, like from twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen, more than the non-student population. Did, would, did you, I guess my question is, are, are you able to look at that, or did you look at that?
So it's really hard
Okay.
to just pull out, um, the impact on those that live in dorms versus not. We can, yes, we can take the students in and out, but you don't know actually of those students, how many live in Golden?
Yeah.
Because you can obviously be a student at mines and live anywhere.
Right.
I mean, I took a class way back when and I was living in Westminster. So, yes and no, you know that that's part of that growth, and knowing that they increased their student population from twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen is important to isolate. You can kinda look at maybe the age change as well. But we, we've seen fairly, like I said, fairly flat growth for this area compared to other places.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah. Wouldn't that, like, do you, do you include the, uh, the folks that are here temporarily in, in the prison? Are they, are they in the?
So, to be honest with you, I don't know for sure. Is it a jail? Or is it a prison?
It's a county jail.
So if it's a jail, then we do not count them? Because they are not permanent residents? Because they are temporary? This is not their normal place?
Well, and also, you know, if it's, if it's kind of at capacity all the time, then it wouldn't matter anyway. I mean, you know, you know there's this many and it's kinda like, like dorm rooms. I mean, the only time we'd see an increase is if they built more dorms, then possibly we'd see more, more
Right.
residents. The only thing I, I'd comment is that Coors is not part of Golden, so like, that, that is a little misleading, I believe.
So the manufacturing, so what's the manufacturing employment that would be in the municipality?
Well, I mean, there's Steve.
What we used to call ES two oh two, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
They're reported, the office is in the city, the brewery is not, and they're reported that they, and, and, in the city.
Oh, so they cheat on it. Okay. Yeah, so I mean, we took it straight from the ES two oh two data, and
I'd say the Coors Tech Center has quite a few, right? And so it's not
So yeah, so part of that, um, part of that commuting would be affected by that as well. So the jobs would be showing in Golden, when they really weren't. They would be on the outside. But it was interesting, I did the buffers thing, same with the commuting. I did a five mile buffer and then a one mile buffer, and it was weird, it didn't change very much. That commuting still was pretty significant. So people are coming in from further than three miles into the community, which I thought was interesting.
Any, anyone else? Thank you, Elizabeth, for coming out. This is so valuable, not just to council, but to the community. And it will be available on the web and on Channel Eight, and I'm pretty sure this will be a go-to presentation for the people of Golden.
Perfect, and if there's ever anything you guys need, don't hesitate in asking. You guys are exactly the kind of client that we like to work with because it's a nice, small community that's close by. Uh, and maybe you don't think that you're small, but I do, cause I'm in Denver. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your coming out.
Thank you.
That will be really helpful to us now and in the future.